Okay, it is 6:07 PM on Tuesday, September 24th, 2024. We'll call the common council meeting to order. I want to introduce Conrad and Rebecca Day. Come on up. And they are going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Conrad is, what'd you say, second grade? And Rebecca's in first grade. And they go to Eisenhower Elementary in Warsaw. Okay, so everyone please stand. And then when you're ready, you can lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and free of justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you for helping us today. We appreciate that very much. Rocko, please.
Middleton.
Here.
Barbara.
Here.
Kyle.
Present.
Here.
Ronson.
Here.
Friend of yours of the minute from our last meeting on September 10th, 2024. I did notice one correction, and that was under my report when TV was misspelled. Were there any changes or corrections? Besides that. Do I have a motion to approve with note of change?
No.
Second.
Much by Dan, second by Leslie. Further discussion. All those in favor should be the usual sign. Leslie, Tad, and Dan approve.
abstain.
Abstain.
And Jenny and Jennifer abstain. Next up is public hearing on the 2025 budget. I will just kind of maybe do a little bit of an overview of some things that we are kind of doing in this budget that I think is impactful or important. Of course, everything we do is important, but these are a couple of things that are maybe more stand out than others, other things. First and maybe foremost is, is that we're going, I'm proposing that we are doing, that we do a change in longevity as a way in which to basically reward individuals sticking around as we kind of look to other cities and towns. And as we look to other, especially police state, police departments and fire departments, what we found is we were woefully, woefully behind. And that can really make a big difference on the pension side for them, which means that if they go to a different community, the kind of longevity pay is wrapped up into their other pay as well. And while that is the case for us, because we were so far behind other communities, it just, it made it more advantageous for them to not stay here because pension is, you know, obviously pension's a long-term commitment, if you will. And so we also looked at, obviously, our, our non-public safety individuals, department heads, et cetera. And so kind of came up with a new schedule of what that could look like. And that obviously would be a policy change that would be in the future approved by the council. But generally speaking, that's probably one of the biggest changes that is being proposed. A couple of new positions we're also proposing for next year again, kind of to just accommodate the growth that we're having. Number one is a code enforcement position, something that we talked about for a while now that would, effectively would, would be a partner, if you will, maybe the softer, gentler side of city government, if you will, that would be able to help steer individuals on ways in which they can, you know, if they're, if they're against an ordinance or if they're doing something that's against an ordinance or has maybe a piece of property that is, you know, having some challenges, that say it that way, this individual can steer them toward opportunities, grant programs, can also work as a liaison between the resident and the building inspector, things like that. So basically, again, a way in which to come alongside the individual to help kind of clean up our community a little bit, to make sure that we're overcoming those, those small issues so that they don't become big issues. So that's in there. We have a, we've talked about for a while now, but a full-time deputy chief's position that because of, again, how our, how our community has grown, how our fire department has grown, it's a lot to place on a single chief. And so having a deputy chief is a, is a help, is a counterbalance, if you will, I think is a really positive thing. We also, let's see here. Going through my thing here. Obviously, there's always multiple little things like improving, improving buildings and buying pieces of equipment and things of that effect. I think we are, we are going to continue with the, or I'm proposing we continue with the enterprise system where we're able to effectively use enterprise to purchase vehicles with our municipal discount at a, at a lower price, drive them for multiple years, a year or multiple years, and then sell them for a higher price and roll that equity back in that actually continues to keep our payments going lower and lower, which is, I think, a really positive thing. Trying not to miss too much, but there's, there's lots of things in each of the budgets, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna bore you on all those things. We are, I have put money aside for next year for us to actually construct a dog park, something that our community has wanted for a while now. It's just been a matter of the when, the where, and the how. So we have to put some dollars aside for the dog park. Trying to think, Tom, is the facade on your, I think the facade's a part of next year's budget, correct?
Yes.
Because it was supposed to be for this year that fixed the facade of the fire department. It's supposed to be this year, but the windows became an issue, so we kind of shifted. If you remember that, we shifted over to that.
There's the roof and the windows, and the windows.
Yes, there's the roof and the windows. Thank you. Thanks for that reminder. We're gonna be doing, purchasing some facepieces and bottles, I believe, as well for the fire department. A couple of things in seated, just for your awareness, which again, seated budget will be a later thing. This isn't property taxes, it's income taxes. But we are planning to do an comprehensive plan update next year. We are planning to do some updates to our website and kind of the, kind of promotional thing, if you will, the video and some of the updates on those kind of things. And trying to think if there's anything else significant. If you do have anything else significant, I haven't covered it. So again, generally speaking, if you take out the longevity proposal, there's not major issues. I think it's a three percent raise.
Two.
Two percent. So that is a two percent raise for employees and then the longevity on top of that. So, so that's kind of what I've proposed for next year. As you know, we, we can teach, yes?
That will be salary.
That will be, okay. So longevity proposal will be the salary ordinance, just for your awareness. So besides that, that's kind of what we have for the budget. No major, no major building projects at the moment. You know, we are still looking at what the jail's gonna be, you know, if, if we end up getting that and if we end up taking that over and all those kind of things. We're, we're actually doing a little bit of analysis with Big or Telly right now to kind of figure out what opportunities or options we have on developing that into something community-based. But generally speaking, you know, the Eagle Park, we're planning to do an amphitheater next year. That's the kind of phase one B, if you will.
What I think is as far as the public knows, that we all have set handles.
Yeah, you've all gone through the budget, so yeah.
We got this here for the first time. We've already set through the budget here. The budget overview and our examiner, you know, what percent's worth in, and can we...
Again, I think that's really, I think that's really important that you're not arriving here on a September evening and we're gonna go line by line for each of the budget items. I just think that's a really inefficient way of doing this kind of thing. I think it's important that you guys, thanks, guys. I think it's really important that you have the opportunity to look through this ahead of time so that if you do have questions, we can talk through those or ask, or answer those questions. So we're only at the public hearing session, but I do want to give you an opportunity. If you have any questions or anything that you want to ask, I'm happy to answer those things. Okay, so we will recess the common council meeting and open up the public hearing. Since there's nobody in the audience, yep, yeah, great. So we will conclude the public hearing and the budget will be up for first approval at the next meeting, correct?
Adoption.
Adoption. But do we only do one reading in the adoption or two readings in the adoption?
Just the one. We just have one reading.
One reading, okay, okay. So that'd be when? October 14th? Okay. So actually, on that note, as a reminder, which I guess I should have reminded in Board of Works as well, but our next city council meeting will not be on the 8th, it will be on the 14th. It'll be on Monday because AIM Idea Summit is false. So it will be on the 14th.
Which I think I tell everybody when I'm on.
A reminder, yeah. Okay. So with that, we will turn it over to department heads. Kelly.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I concluded it. Yeah, I did conclude the public hearing, did I not? I'm pretty confident I did. So we have restarted the council meeting. Kelly.
All right. We had a little storm damage over the weekend. We assessed town and the west side of town wasn't too bad. Little things that I'm sure people will be cleaning up. Our last limb pick will be October 7th. So we seen a little bit more damage out at Eagle Glen in that area, so we assembled a couple crews and went out there and cleaned that up, got the sweeper out there and swept it. So just trying to stay ahead of that stuff. And, and then we have a guy doing inspection work for a sewer over Timbers Edge that's still going on. Not sure how long they'll have on that, but they're moving along pretty good. Sign maintenance, we have about 40 signs to replace, street name signs that are faded from project we started 12 to 15 years ago. And they're currently starting to fade enough that we need to replace some of those street name signs. And limb pick, or leak pickup, I've had some people ask me to start doing that. And the scheduled date is October 21st, but we will probably go around, make a pass through town next week. And just, I have seen a few piles around and we'll just start the process a little bit earlier. That's it.
Question of Kelly. Thank you. Chip?
West Gate is nearly complete. They're putting on the, hopefully tomorrow, the surface of the asphalt. And then we've got two more street lights to do. The ribbon cutting for that, phase two is October 2nd at 6 o'clock. Eagle Park is coming along too. The pickled walk cords are nearly finished, will be opening up Saturday. And swing is complete and ribbon cutting for that is October 3rd at noon. Today, we had a Blue River Trail pre-bid meeting and we are gonna open bids October 14th at 5 o'clock for that at the Board of Works. So things are going along very smoothly.
Question of Chip. Thank you. Matt?
We're getting games around for the mother-son, which tickets went on sale this week. The guys have tried to get more games. They repaired some of the old games from last year that either got damaged in transport or by just the kids playing with them. They've also made some new games to try to keep the interest up in it. With the, like with the Shriners and things, we're having the parades and that was a very busy area on Saturday with JFL and the parade getting ready to launch. We also have soccer that's over there as well. So as we keep getting activities over there, that parking lot is going to start being a really congested area to have parades and things like that. So we'll have to take a look at that in the future. With the water department's help, we got the irrigation for the football fields going since it was so dry, trying to make it a little bit nicer for the kids to play out on that. And then karma comes around and a few days later, we get rain. So the hands group from the community foundation came out and they painted the rest of the concrete balls that were back at the pond. They look very nice. And we'll just make more of those over the winter. It's kind of a winter project. And then Karen Codey is, she's pushing it out at the high school. So she usually has several groups lined up that want to come out and, and paint some scenery on that. The pool will get some new padding installed this Friday. We had ordered it last year, but we had the pool already filled so we could open up Memorial Day. So they're coming in Friday to install that. And that's it.
Question of Matt. Thank you. Gary.
All right. Austin Sturgis has been approved by Perth and has started his FTO process and seems to be doing very well in that. He's into his second week now. Seems like he's enjoying the job. We did hire Madison Elliott, Consuelo Bridge, and Larissa Taylor for communications, and they've all started and seem to be working out well as well. So things are looking up a little bit. We do still have four applicants in the interview process. Board of Works did approve with, I talked to Rosie, you know, since we've been down a few guys here for a while, that we had a little extra money in the budget this year to hire a couple extra to replace the RSR, both RSRs are retiring. Brian's scheduled to retire January 25 and Scott's scheduled to retire June 25. So try to get these guys in training and get them going and up the stuff by the time Lee Scott retires. So we won't be there by Brian. We'll be on a good, good track there. Trying to look forward, thank you. We do have no parking signs over on Whitley and Van Muren. I have had a complaint, one complaint since we put those up. We just blocked off the first half block just so people could turn off Van Muren on the Whitley when cars were setting at the stop sign because that was a little congested there for a while. I did spend a few hours over there monitoring traffic, watching and seeing how things are working. And in the very beginning, we did talk about putting no parking signs all the way down to Elvers from Whitley, or from Van Muren. We figured that would be like a speedway down through there if we did that. And there's a lot of houses there, congested area, and a lot of those residents don't have that much off-street parking. Several have children, earth-driving age, need places to park, so took that into consideration too. And there really hasn't been that many issues. So like I said, I got one complaint so far. I don't know if you guys have received any, but it seems to be working as it should. No different than any other street through the city that has parked cars on the side with cars trying to pass. So that's, and the shrine parade went very well. We didn't have, you know, Tom, Tom says he had some people talking to him at an intersection he was at, but other than that, I didn't hear any really big issues or discussions about it. I think we're pretty decent. We are getting the new mylon range system set up since the damage in the training facility, that's since been fixed and getting our new, they're coming down to set up a new system and train us first week of October. We do, we are doing emergency vehicle operation course on Tower View on Sunday, October 6th. So we're trying to do it on Sunday because it's kind of a curvy road and get some guys some experience and so less congestion with all the business and we have contact with all the business.
Question of Gary. Thank you. Mike?
Last week, we've been changing meters. We've changed 30. Got a probably five to 10 more to go that are not reading. Still having problems with the collector system. Some of them are not, they'll read by the handheld, but they will not read with the collector system. We had a main break, a part-street and part-drive. Pretty good size. It moved a lot of dirt. But we also replaced, repaired two fire hydrants, one down at the Fire Museum and the other now at Essex Metal. That's behind, the old Essex is still there. But they wouldn't, wouldn't shut off, so we had to pull this, pull the enters out of it and put new seats in there and that and everything. Seems to be working now.
Tell them you're fixed.
Huh?
Tell them you're fixed.
We could get them apart, right? The guys come in and said, hey, we can't get them apart. I said, pour coke in it. And they told me, oh, you're, you're nuts. It ain't gonna work. So we got four liters of coke for both hydrants poured in, and guess what? Seats come loose.
I looked on the bill today and it's on the bills that we approved and it said coke for hydrants. And I was like, I thought, you know what? I'm not even gonna ask.
You know, who would've ever thought, you know? We've had, we've had salesmen tell it. If you're having a hard time, pour coke down there. So that's what we did. It worked. Now, all I have to say is, if that does that to a hydrant, what's that do to you?
Questions of Mike?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Today I received, you know, I talked about cyanide and having that removed from our permit. I got the draft permit from IDIM today. It's been a review process for 30 days and then at that time, no issue of, not necessarily a new permit, but just a modified permit. I mean, it still expires the same day. We still have to go through everything that we go through now until we receive that. So our storage tank, one of our mixtures was flushed for its takeout front. We got everything fixed, but it's out of service now because we can't retrieve it. Other, there's something wrong with the guide rail, so instead of that breaking and falling all the way to the bottom, we just shut it down. Last Thursday, we had the CSO log with IDIM. Four members from the IDIM staff were up and we went and made a tour of the facility, went through all the CSOs and made a whole laundry list of things that I'm sure that were wrong, so I'm waiting on that letter to see what we have to correct. And also received last week the certified performance test from Bond for our new pumps for the Jackson Main Street, Fourth Main Project. The new pumps that are going in, they are built, they test them, they certify them, and of it's in engineer review and unless they're approved, then hopefully they'll be shipped and then we can move forward with that part of the project. That's all, Kevin, we should get questions.
Questions of Mike? Thank you. Terry?
Finished to work on the software and the new server for the granite stuff that the street department uses to televise lines. So that's been upgraded. I think that's mostly complete. We installed a new access point in the fire department engineer's room. So the guys that have laptops can connect to the network because we just don't have enough network connections in there for them to plug into. We decommissioned our extreme server today and pushed all of its functions to the cloud. And we have fiber and pieces and parts ordered for both the test kitchen and Eagle Park. We're waiting on some of that equipment to come in.
Question of Terry. Thank you. Tom?
I thought we had the problem of 102 fixed. The Gremlins back and the electrical system on pump 102 is, or engine 102 is frustrating Adam to death. We do have a company come to do pump testing on 101 and 107 because I can't put 102 in it because it's got issues. Same company that does the pump tests are also going to, they're emergency vehicle technicians are gonna work with that and see everything he's done, see if they can't come up with a remedy themselves. If not, we're gonna probably have to figure out a way to get that engine down to Anno Ohio, which like the mayor said, that vehicle knows its way down here very well. Or to see if we can't get it fixed. I take nothing away from Adam, who has put a lot of heart and soul into trying to figure this out. Electrical issues that come and go are very difficult to diagnose because, well, if it's not broke, you can't fix it. So just one of those things, we're gonna have to give it some time and see if we can't get somebody to figure it out. Windows on upstairs of the firehouse are half-replaced or half of them have been replaced. The gentleman is supposed to be here yet this evening to do some more of those. He's a subcontractor for Paul Davis. They're running it through them, but giving it to their subcontractor because it was too small to jump with them. Air conditioning unit on top of City Hall was replaced late last week. Kind of had to do a, an emergency road closure because of using the crane was a little bit more dangerous than I anticipated, so we blocked it off for, I think it was like an hour, wasn't it? While they left it and took it off and then put the new one back on. So I had to apologize to the Board of Works the night that I didn't use foresight and that to do it. And then the Board of Works also gave permission this evening to replace Chris LaRue, who turned in his intent to retire March 21st of 2025.
Question of Tom. Thank you. I have one more bi-weekly report from Sean. He said Culsecreek Lane, all the boring and trenching is complete. They are pulling wire and setting transformers this week. Again, was able to obtain the fiber for the Marshall Building and sounds like waiting on mounting equipment is what he said. I don't know if that's the same as you, Terry. Insult three of the five streetlights at Westgate. Residents are, he said residents are already, some, he's had some complaints already about the lights being too bright. I think I saw something on our Westgate Facebook page that there's at least a resident that said, who wants, who wants another light? So that's always the fun game of how much is too much light, how much is not enough. Obviously, they're working on services and maintenance projects and tree trimming and things like that. And he has a couple of guys that are at lineman training this week, I believe. Either this week or next week. So. Marsha?
Nothing.
Rosie?
Yeah.
A couple of things for your information. As you are aware, I issued after talking to Tom and having conversation from the Fire Chiefs Association, I did issue a burn ban on Friday and three hours promptly later, it rained a half an inch rain.
You should've done that sooner.
I apparently should've. Like, save the beetle, choose enough times it happens. So, so I have been in conversation with Amy Biggs, our EMA Director for the county. The Fire Chiefs consensus, Fire Chiefs Association consensus was to wait until Thursday to render it's a new decision or of either continuance or lifting it. And the opinion is, is yes, the ground's absorbed most of the rainfall, but conditions still remain relatively dry. That's weird saying that because of how wet it has been kind of today, but generally speaking, we're, we're still kind of in a drought. We've not necessarily worked our way out of that yet. So with that being said, we will reevaluate it on Thursday, which we were planning to reevaluate on Thursday anyways, so actually that works out pretty well. So that's, that is that. Today, we had a presentation, Lee Botts and I had a presentation to the road brief regarding the Attila Grade Advisory Board, how that came to be, what's its purpose, why they do what they do, things like that. We also had Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation. And on Monday, we had, what, four groups of third graders from Northern Heights that came through City Hall. And, you know, be happy to know that doing the chickens in the city exercise, that three to one, they've said, let's keep no chickens in the city. So maybe you'll be happy to know that. But I'll also let you know that this Thursday, I have youth council, the, the Moak Park, who we've, between the redevelopment commission and my office, we've, we've hired Moak Park to do an evaluation of the jail and whether or not to, so that kind of helps to make a decision on what we should do, if you will, on our side and what opportunity is there. So that's happening on Thursday. Again, youth council is happening on Thursday as well. I will tell you, I am out of the office from Friday through next Wednesday. However, as mentioned, Westgate Ribbon Cutting will be on the night of Wednesday, the 2nd. I will be there, October 2nd at 6:00 PM. You're all invited to attend. That's at the corner of Lawrence and Westgate. And then on the 3rd, Eagle Park Ribbon Cutting again is at noon. So it'll be a busy week. One last thing I'll maybe mention is that the candlelight, that the community foundation is hosting a candlelight ceremony remembering suicide victims on the night of the 3rd. It's a, it is a ceremony that is put on by, in remembrance of Eric Lee. And so there was a, basically a kind of a, an account, a foundation account, if you will, that was set up after his passing. And so they're, they're trying to find ways in which to make encourage, you know, give encouragement to the survivors, if you will, of, you know, or, or people that were left behind, if you will, from individuals who, who, you know, unfortunately passed from suicide. So, so I will be there. I'm supposed to... I'm supposed to give some words. Very, very nervous about that because that's a, that's, that's a, that's something I've not done before on that kind of topic. So I'm a little concerned about that. But nevertheless, it should be a great ceremony of, you know, the very least of just healing and remembering and some things like that, so. Besides that, I don't think I have anything at the moment. Dan?
Nothing, sir.
Jennifer?
The Arts Commission had their studio art tour on the 7th and it was a great day for the artists and for the community. Lots of people came to check things out. I was over at the museum and people came through to visit a collaborative project between the Arts Commission and the museum to check out current and past art that was on display. That was pretty cool. Then we will be having our Arts Commission retreat to plan future activities coming up in October. This Saturday at 9:00 AM, volunteers are needed to help plant trees on East Hannah Street if anyone is interested. That's the tree board that's standing there. If they can't help this Saturday but would like to be involved in the future, we do need volunteers for future planting projects. There's a hope that we're gonna plant some more trees into October at some point. So if anybody would like to volunteer, they can reach me through my city email.
Great. Thank you. Ted?
Nothing.
Jenny?
Nothing.
Leslie?
I have nothing.
Okay. We have no press and we have no audience, so we will call the meeting adjourned. Thank you.